At this time, I'd like to ask trustee Adams to begin the meeting, who serves as the chair of the Spring ISD Equity Committee, to begin reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. "Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students, with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do."
Thank you, trustee Adams. Our next item tonight will begin with the presentation of colors. It will be led by our Decanee Wildcat NJROTC Battalion. The pledges will be led by Cadet Petty Officer 3rd Class Camilia Martinez. The color guard commander carrying the U.S. flag is Cadet Petty Officer 3rd Class Daisy Alcora. Carrying the Texas flag is Lieutenant Jordan Walker. Left rifle is Cadet Petty Officer 2nd Class Gabrielle Lopez. Right rifle is Cadet Petty Officer 1st Class Savannah Ellis. The Decanee Wildcats NJROTC Battalion is led by Chief Victor Adams and Chief Robert Dunn. At this time, would everyone please rise for the presentation of colors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ready, colors. Ready, cut. Come march, march. Color guard, put. Upboard, face. Forward, march. Color guard, put. Read the colors. And salute. Ready, two. Color guard. Report. Color guard, put. Left, face. Forward, march. At this time, if you can please remain standing, and we will observe a moment of silence in your own way. You may be seated. Our next item is our superintendent remarks, and so we'll now hear from our super proud superintendent, Dr. Lupita Inahosa.
Thank you, President Durant, members of the board, our public audience that's here, present tonight, and online. Just to everyone, Happy Valentine's Day. Just realized that it is Valentine's Day, and you all have chosen to spend it with us. So, well, and y'all are chuckling. Maybe you didn't think it was gonna be here. But we are truly, truly honored to have you here tonight. And just, you know, once again, you know, we talk about showcasing and really talking about the great things that are happening in Spring ISD. And just a week ago, we had our State of the District Breakfast. And it gave us an opportunity to truly showcase our amazing students, all the great work that they're doing, the great achievements that they are securing, and that we know that it couldn't be possible without our educators, without the teachers, day in and day out, working with our students, without our school leaders staying focused on what our students need. Just this morning, I was talking to the academics team, and I reminded them that we are Spring ISD, and we're a very gritty district, meaning we don't give up. And so at our State of the District, we had the opportunity to showcase our students, showcase our district. We had not had a State of the District Breakfast or any event highlighting our district since 2020, since the pandemic. And it was my very first opportunity to share that with our community. And I couldn't have been more pleased. Many of you were there with just the amazing work that our district put forth. Our child nutrition department had an amazing breakfast for us. Our operations team, our police department, our communications team, everyone coming together to make sure we had everything in place to showcase the great things that Spring ISD is doing. And also, received another vote of confidence from our partners. This was the first time we had a ticketed event, and all of our partners, you know, showed up, stood out, and supported our district. With the funds, we will be giving those funds right back to our students. We want to be able to support their innovative and entrepreneurship skills, so more coming on that. Tonight, we have a special treat, because we will be hearing and seeing some of that artwork from our Black History Month. We had an amazing program last Thursday night? No, Tuesday night, Tuesday night, right? It seems like just yesterday. But if you missed it, please go to our website. Right in the very front and center, you'll see the videos, the article of our Black History Showcase that we had, again showcasing the talents and the skills of our students. And for this year's group, we had individual projects as well as group projects, and it focused on the impact of Africa on the world, as well as the impact made by people of African descent throughout our history. We had students participating from all backgrounds in these projects. And it was truly an honor to have the opportunity to not only see the projects, but hear from our students as they stood next to their projects and explained them, also the performances that we had. And, you know, we talk about Spring ISD is a very diverse district. We took the opportunity to celebrate its diversity last week, but it is something that we're very proud of, and we celebrate every single day. It is the strength of Spring ISD. Another quick reminder that we do have our school quality survey. And parents, we heard from you. We actually have extended the timeline for our parents to give us the input. Many parents said, "I'm having a difficult time logging on. I need more time," or "I need paper surveys." So for parents, not for our students. Students, you completed yours on time, and our employees, our school staff, completed theirs on time. But for our parents, we have time all the way through this Friday. So time is extended. Please go to our website, and you see it front and center, We want to hear from you. And then, last but not least, you know, we've kept our district very busy, and our board has stood with us side by side. Just last Saturday, we participated in our Attendance Matters Walk. And this is our goal, our focus, was to raise the awareness that attendance matters. Our kids need to be in school every single day so that they can learn. And so for us, we had the opportunity to, we say it was a walk, but we really got in a van and drove, but then walked within the community, right? To be able to visit students that we had already identified that were missing too many days of school. And so to have the board with the administration side by side, to talk to students, to talk to parents, to let them know the importance, number one, of coming to school, but then, number two, is providing support and resources. So special thanks to our Student Support Services that had all the information on a one page where parents and students could immediately connect to Spring ISD to secure resources that maybe were a barrier for them coming to school every single day. And so just a special thanks to our board, special thanks to our Student Support Services, and to all the people that were at the schools, because every single school participated. They were either in the community, walking, knocking on the doors, or calling on the phone, making those important phone calls. And I do, President Durant, have a very short video that I'd like for the team to share so that our community can get a good feel for what happened last week. And I think, Moji, we have the video ready to go? Okay, he's getting it for us. And this will give everyone a flavor of what we experienced at Booker Elementary. So special thanks to them.
In Spring ISD, we have been doing our success talks for nine years. Doesn't get old. It is so important for us and Spring ISD to ensure that we connect with our students, that we know what is happening, why our kids are either not coming back to school, or in this case, today's event was to try to figure out why our students are not coming to school on a daily basis.
You all get ready. We are going to do our role. McNabb Elementary.
This event is huge. All 43 campuses were this morning, starting at 9:00, making the contacts, calling our parents, visiting homes. It is every single campus in Spring ISD.
Rennells Elementary.
It's important for kids to be successful, and it's important to Spring ISD, as well as our administration and the board, and to have an opportunity to actually go out and meet with our students that haven't been coming to school, because attendance matters. And we have a lot of programs in place that can support what may be happening in their personal life that's prohibiting them from coming to school.
So there's some options that might make it more attractive to him, and he doesn't have to give up.
Right, right, right.
The work, right? So we have a new high school that Dr. Inahosa has created, Momentum High School. You can go in the evenings, you can go during the day. It's an adjusted schedule.
Some students just have a lot of family problems that they're helping with. And we have a wonderful new high school, Momentum High School, that can really individualize programs where students can go anytime of day.
We have a welding program. We sure do have.
We just really want to make sure that all of our kids know that we see them, that we value them, and that we're here to make sure that they get on track and reach their fullest potential.
So once again, just special thanks to our board for being out there with us and making the connection with our community. Special thanks to all of our schools, because every single school participated, visiting homes, making those phone calls. And at the end of the day, we want to let our students know, our families know that we see you, we know that you're out there. We want to help you come to school every single day. Attendance really does matter, and we want to make sure that every student is successful here in Spring ISD. So thank you very much. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. Next, I'd like to ask any of the trustees who would like to make remarks. Please do so at this time.
Madam President, we have had a busy month already, and it is just February 14th. But our schools are producing Black History programs that we've been attending that have been awesome, that I need to give a shout out to them, starting with our district performances at Decanee High School. The step shows, the music, the songs are from all of the schools. I don't want to start naming Bailey, and Decanee, all of the performances, but they were very well-prepared, organized, and done. The presentations that the students made, it was obvious they had done their homework and their research. So hats off to them. And then we go to Natasha, we go over to Marshall. And Debbie, did we see a very nice museum put on by the students at Marshall Elementary? They had some inventors recognized that I had never heard of. For example, do you know who made the potato chip? There was a black guy named Robert Crump.
That's right.
Invented the potato chip. And students had researched that. I was just amazed at the different types of research that they did and the presentation that they made. I thought was very well done at Marshall. And I understand they're going to present that again on the 23rd to their community. Then we left there, and we went to Bailey to meet with the 7th grade, Winford. And those students were amazing. Dr. Inahosa was with us, and the questions that they asked and the things that the 7th grade student council spoke of, of their responsibility for being accountable, responsible. And it just warmed my heart to see how awesome those 7th grade students were. And then at Ikenrow, boy, did we have fun. The students, for elementary students from across the district came, and they made different projects based on their school's country that they had to represent at Ikenrow. Then we had the high school students that worked as mentors with those students and worked with them. The high school students played part in the African-American dance that they did, and they had costumes, and it was a lot of fun. They even gave me a kentor cloth that I assured them that I was going to wear at school board meetings. So thank you to all of the kids and staff at Ikenrow for that night. And what was really touching was to see all of the parents. We had a large amount of parents that were there, volunteering to work with students and help them in their projects. So we've had a busy month, and like I said, it's just February 14th. And I know we have several more schools to visit before the year. So I'm very proud of what our schools are doing this month, and hats off to all of them. Hats off. Thank you.
So it was a busy month. And so just what you talked about, trustee Newhouse, there was all of that. I got back from DC after meeting with the chief of staff for Congressman Crenshaw, where we had a really good conversation about our needs in public education and extended ourselves as a resource to him as he considers his important work. I got back and attended at Spring High School a performance of Mamma Mia. And we just saw some of that out here earlier today. Wonderful performance. Ms. Acker does a fantastic job with those students, really getting them ready for going forward out of Spring High School. And then the last thing I'll talk about, because I don't want to hog time from everybody else, is I attended the district spelling bee at Decanee High School. And we had a young student from Hersch Elementary who's going to be representing us at Regional, and a young man from Bailey Middle School who will be his alternate. And there were spelling champions from across the district on that stage, excellent spellers. The top word, if you can, I don't even know that I can pronounce this word, was "top gallant." That was the winning spelling word for this 4th grader from Hersch Elementary. So there is a lot of great things happening around the district, and it's a really busy time of year for us. I know our teachers are gearing up, getting ready for high-stakes testing. There's just a lot going on.
And so I will add on to our pride at Spring ISD for our readers in the NCAA Read to the Final Four for your commitment to reading and taking control of your own learning with that competition. Special congratulations to Burchett and Sawyers. Hey, all right, let's give them a round of applause, absolutely. They made it to the Sweet 16, and that excitement is because it was out of 189 schools across Houston. So that definitely deserves a round of applause for our kids, for sure. Yes, all right. And as I watched the news segment, the news reporter, the two students, Sophie and Elsie, and they asked them, "Why are you excited about the competition?" And so Sophie said, "Because reading is fun, and I get to go to different worlds." And I just thought that was so profound and beautiful to hear, because while, like we mentioned, we know testing is a part of reading, and we want our kids to develop proficient reading skills, but at the end of the day, the goal is for them to become lovers of reading, to get lost in books, to find adventure in reading and really see it as a treasure. And so we definitely have our kids on the right track. And thank you to the teachers, the families, the digital literacy coaches who tallied up all the minutes, school leaders, everybody who helped the kids to get this far. And just want to encourage the kids to continue reading beyond this competition, because you can only get stronger and stronger in reading, and that's going to help you in your future. So y'all are on the right track. So congratulations to all of our readers.
Well, I'd like to echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues. We really have had a busy month, and I didn't realize that it's only the 14th. Oh, my God, 14 more days to go. But I want to thank everyone that participated in our first table talks that we had. And we learned a lot from the community. It was very exciting, very engaging. Since COVID, this was my first experience with actually, you know, being able to sit across from community members and actually be able to hear their thoughts and get their perspective on how we're doing as a district. And we learned a lot. We know that we have some growing pains or some areas of improvement, but I enjoyed the feedback, and I thank everyone that was able to come out. So don't miss the next table talk. Look, the information will be online. I can't think of the date right now, because I have so much in my head. When is it? Is it Saturday? Oh, well, I'll see you guys on Saturday. So yeah, so this Saturday, we have another table talk. So please come out and engage with us as board members. We really want to hear your feedback. And I think you can register for it on the website, springisd.org. Go to the website and register for the event. We look forward to hosting you on Saturday. And thank you all who participated so far.
I'm really excited about that, because the board seeks an opportunity to hear from you all. So we have building bridges with the board for the community, and then we have table talks for the staff. And we have a table talk coming up on the 27th, and building bridges on the 25th. So thank you, trustee Hodges, for leading that effort. Anybody else? It has been an exciting and a busy week, busy month, and it continues to be a busy month. But I'm just really excited about the work that my colleague is doing. They are out there supporting our children, being advocates for you and our community at the highest level. We went to Washington, DC and sat down with our legislators to talk about and advocate for the students here in Spring ISD. And I'm just really proud and grateful to be a part of such an amazing bunch of professionals that represent this community. So thank you, everyone. Our next item is one of my most favorite part of the meeting, and that's our spotlight and recognitions. So at this time, I'd like to ask the board and Dr. Inahosa to join me up front in the horseshoe.
All right. President Durant, esteemed members of the board and Superintendent Inahosa, this is the most exciting time of our board meeting, where we really get to spotlight and showcase our incredible students. Up first, we are going to highlight several of our students as part of our second annual Rising Writers Student Expo, an incredible event where we got to really display and showcase our students' writing abilities, where we had over 400 submissions from our students. So I know I'm really excited, but I really want to give Dr. Mendoza the opportunity to go ahead and give a quick overview to the board about this exciting showcase and also to recognize our students.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board, our super proud superintendent. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce you to some of our medalists from our January 18th Rising Writers Event. So you should have received, I think, I believe you received a binder with the medalist papers in them. So tonight, we have a few of those students who are actually going to read snippets of their excerpts from their writing pieces in the hopes of hooking you so you go into that binder and read all the way through their pieces. And then after those three students read snippets to you, we have two published authors who are current students, and they will just talk just very briefly about the books that are in your bags that you have on your tables. So our first student is from Springwoods Village Middle School, and his name is Troy Caines.
Good evening. This is my role models argumentative essay. Role models are important figures that have always been present in our lives. The mothers highlighted in the stories Fist Cheeks by Amy Tan and My Mother's Garden by Caitlin Greenwich, both proved to be admirable role models for their daughters. Both of them contribute to the story in such a way that teaches the narrator and their daughters a valuable lesson. In Fist Cheeks, Amy's mom cooks a traditional Chinese dinner for Christmas to help Amy embrace her culture. Amy felt embarrassed since she presumed Robert and his family weren't familiar with this food and therefore did not like it. Whether that be the truth or not, Amy's mother still wanted her to be proud of her culture instead of ashamed. After Robert and his family had left, she explained why she did it. However, Amy still felt distressed. She felt animosity towards what her mother had done and couldn't learn to accept it until many years later, long after she had forgotten about Robert. This makes Amy's mother a fair role model, because she implemented her lesson in a coherent way, even if Amy couldn't understand it at that time.
Our second reader is Ethan Wu from Wells Middle School.
This is a story called "The Long Bounty." "Don't go, it's too risky," Robert exclaimed. "Rumors say people have been stalked by some guy in a mask." "Well, they're just rumors, right?" he commented. "Packed my bags, said goodbye to August, and hugged Robert, but his face was troubled. Despite this, I drove to the dim cabin anyway. Took hours, but the place was..." Took hours, but the place was beautiful. Birds were singing, sun was shining, and it was all magical." "Cabin was homely with soft couches, TV and a huge window." "However, something felt off. The front door was grim and alarmingly scratched. I brushed it off as some animal wanting food or something. Slept peacefully that night, though I suddenly woke up for some water. I headed downstairs when I heard some screams from the door. There were a lot of hair-raising scratches. I couldn't see much through the thick fog, but I saw a silhouette of a man peering into the windows." "I'd hear those dreadful sounds a lot the next few nights. Then, on my third night, I was about to call Robin, as I was going insane from all the noise, when I heard the front door creaking open. Luckily, I had everything packed and jumped out the window as I heard the treaded footsteps near my bedroom door. I drove away while calling a park ranger. Then, a couple hours later, he called back and told me he found nothing in the cabin at all."
And our third reader is from Decane High School, and she's going to read part of her bilingual excerpt. Her piece is called Mi Abuela Y Yo. Chimena Alejandra Sepeda Alvalado.
Mi abuela y yo. La conexión que existe entre mi abuela o mi tita Olga y yo es única. Todo ni si estoy enicia cuando mi tita me cuidaba desde que nací. Mi mamá tenía que trabajar, así que mi abuela me tuvo que cuidar. No soy buena con las palabras o expresándome. Pero si tuviera que decirme como es Tita, ocuparé muchas páginas, que a mi parecer solo tengo una página. Tita es alegre, cocina rico, hace chistes malos, que tal malos que son, dan risa. Ella tiene carácter fuerte pues es una abuela mexicana, pero por dentro es dulce, cariñosa y amorosa. Mi amor por Tita es inefable, al igual que nuestra conexión. Si tienes problemas, Tita Olga estará ahí para ayudarte a resolverlos. Si te sientes mal, Tita Olga te cuidará. Tita da besos que sanen el alma y abrazos que curan el corazón. Y aunque ella esté muy enferma, Tita siempre está para mí. Recuerdo cuando era pequeña, era muy asustadiza. Siempre me levantaba en las noches e iba corriendo a la cama de Tita Olga, jurando que había un monstruo debajo de mi cama. Mi abuela solo me miraba entre dormida y me decía: "Le seguro tienes miedo porque no rezas. Anda de su base, hija." Y me terminaba acurrucando con ella. Era tan seguido que se volvió costumbre. Extraño eso. Pero también extraño nuestras pequeñas charlas mientras nos sentábamos en la pequeña banca de madera con girasoles, viendo el atardecer. Extraño ver su cara todos los días, comer con ella y acurrucarme con ella. Tuve que alejarme de mi abuela porque me mudé a Houston, pero aún siento nuestra cálida enmarsesible conexión. Tita Olga ya no se acuerda a veces de mí. A veces olvida de mi nombre o de casi su familia, pero sé que aún siente nuestra conexión. Espero que algún día podamos volver a vivir juntas y poder hacer de nuevo aquellas cosas que extraño hacer con ella. My grandmother and I. The connection that exists between my grandmother and my tita Olga and me is unique. Our whole story begins when my tita took care of me since I was born. My mom had the works, so my grandmother had to take care of me. I'm not good with words or expressing myself, but if I had to describe who Tita is, it would take many pages and I only had one page. Tita is cheerful, she's cooked delicious food, she makes bad jokes that are so bad they make you laugh. She has a strong character because she's a Mexican grandmother, but inside, she's sweet, caring and loving. My love for Tita is ineffable, just like our connection. If you have problems, Tita Olga will be there to help you to solve them. If you feel bad, Tita Olga will take care of you. Tita gets kisses that heal your soul and hugs that heal your hurt. And even though she's very sick, Tita is always there for me. I remember when I was little, I was very scared. I would always get up at night and roam to Tita Olga's bed. It's worrying that there was a monster under my bed. My grandmother would just look at me in my sleep and say, "You're sorry you're scared because you don't pray. Come on up, daughter." And I woke and I woke up calling it with her. It was so often it became a habit. I miss that. But I also miss a little chat while we sat on the little wooden bench with some flowers, watching the sunset. I miss seeing her face every day, eating with her and calling it with her. I had to move away from my grandmother because I moved to Houston, but I still feel warm and feeling connection. Tita Olga doesn't remember me sometimes. Sometimes she's forgetting my name on the entire family, but I know she's still feel our connection. I hope someday we collide together again and be able to do again those things I miss doing with her.
And our last two are published authors. So you may remember Sarah from last year. She's actually published a book. So she's just going to briefly talk about the importance of writing and how she's progressed in the last year. And then you will also see our other student published author RJ. And he's going to talk a little bit about his second book that he has published, which is also in your bags. So Sarah first.
Hi, my name's Sarah Salinas. It's great to see you guys again. I recently published a book, I'm so sorry. I recently published a book called Here's to the Day I Die. I don't know if you guys remember my poem, The Girl with the Blank Expression, but that, this book is basically coming off of it and kind of going more in depth with what the poem was about. I guess I could read the back of the book, if that's all right? Actually, I'll read the last one because that kind of explains more. "If I shared my thoughts to the world, will people understand? Will people stop their plans, the plans of ending their own life, the plans that could possibly be carried out in time? If I can make an impact that would be good, maybe I wouldn't feel so misunderstood. Maybe others will begin to feel better. Maybe they won't write letters. If I shared my thoughts, will that stop my own fate? Or will it be too late for me, too late for me to be free, too late to not let these thoughts just roam free? Please save me. But I'd rather save you. If that meant I stayed alive, I'd rather save you if that meant you'd survive. But as our time together has come to a close, please don't give up on your hopes, your dreams for the future, or forget the time of who you once were." All of these mistakes, all of these, all of this makes you who you are. You may be left with a scar on your flesh or in your heart, but think of this as a time to restart, a time to part ways with the past, a time where you won't feel as if your mind has crashed, a time that you don't wish for your last breath, a time where you won't think about your own death. You'll be okay. The pain will go away. Just please stay. And as this is our final goodbye, let's raise a toast. Here's to the day I die." So my book is basically, it's like my thoughts throughout the months after I tried to attempt something. And it's my thought process, and I've progressed so much from that. And writing has done so much for me in those times. It has helped me cope in ways that I can't even imagine. And that's kind of it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you guys again for the third time in this calendar year. But my book is entitled The Legend Tournament. And it is the second book in the series that I'm actually working on about basketball and about a basketball player. I spend a lot of my time during the summer when I'm not at marching band or I'm not working on my golf game. I spend a lot of time with my brother. And he's a really good basketball player. I was just talking with a lady over here in the seats. And apparently he's really good. Never seen him play, but he's pretty good. And so I really enjoyed writing a book where I think he could relate. Because as soon as I wrote the book, he was the first one to touch it. Yeah, he was the first one to touch it. He was the first one to read it cover to cover. And I really think that that resonated with him to see a young man like him playing basketball. You know, playing basketball, he's a straight A student. He's made one B since he started school. And so this kid, straight A student, I didn't put the B in the book, so he's a straight A student. But I think it really resonated with my brother. And so as long as he's okay with that, I'm okay publishing a book. And so this is my second book. The first book is entitled The Legend. And it's actually the kid's journey coming from middle school to high school. And so my brother was a sixth grader, seventh, sixth grader, when I published the first book. And so now he's in eighth grade going to ninth grade, and he just touched the book again to kind of, you know, get that thing going before, get his mindset right before eighth to ninth, because that's a big jump. And so I think that he enjoyed it. I think a lot of the people that read it enjoyed it. And so, you know, that's what I'm here for. I just like to write and I like people enjoying my writing. I don't do it for awards. I'm saying this is, you know, we're a metal. I don't do it for awards. I don't do it for the money, but I just do it because I enjoy it. And so I appreciate you all coming out and paying attention to us, you know? Because we're kids writing, and when I was in middle school, it wasn't this big of a deal. And so it's just really nice to see. So I appreciate you all, you know, paying attention to us, listening to us, hear our voices. And that's it. Happy Valentine's Day.
So just want to say thank you again. I don't know why I'm crying. I'm up here like tearing up. But I just want to say publicly, thank you to Dr. Hannah Hosa. Because she gave us a charge as a literacy team a couple of years ago. And this was a vision and it's a reality, and now it's an annual event. And you see the power that writing has. And it's a beautiful thing. So I just want to say thank you. And congratulations to all of our medalists and to all of those, please read what they have written in that binder for you.
I don't think there are words to express how proud you guys make us and how grateful we are to have an opportunity to celebrate you. A lot of people tell us school board members don't get paid, but this is payment for us. It touches my heart, and I think I'm the one that started you crying. My grandmother always said that reading was the key to knowledge. It opens up and strengthens the mind. The strongest muscle in your body is your mind. And to be able to write something that can motivate and touch other people is a gift. It's a gift to be treasured and it's a gift to celebrate. And tonight, we celebrate you. Thank you. The rest of the board would like an opportunity to celebrate you as well. So if you can go around in the horseshoe and shake everybody's hand. And while they're doing that, are there any parents here with you all tonight? Can your parents please stand up and be recognized? Great job, moms and dads. We take some privilege and together, our students will soar. Don't go crying. We want to get a photo. We want to get a photo.
All right, guys. Let's get here we go, right here. Parents, if y'all want to come up right here to take a quick photo, let's go. Okay, just a couple more. Here we go, guys. Right here, right here. Nice smiles, everybody. Y'all stay still just for a second. Let's get some parents in here. Do you want to be right here? Get a little more centered.
Can we get the principals here to support these children every day and stand? And I also want to recognize our literacy team that stood tonight. Thank you for everything that you pour and deposit into our kids because we see the outcomes tonight, and that is a blessing.
Okay, members of the board, so sorry. I'm sorry, President Durant. Okay. We're going to move on to our next celebration. As we heard from Superintendent Hannah Hosa, last Tuesday, we had the immense privilege to be a part of the Black History Month Expo that we were able to see, you know, really diversity championed and embraced. As we continue to embrace our theme this year of Africa's impact on the world, it was amazing to be able to see all of our scholars really showcase and display all of their incredible projects, their work, even their performing in visual arts demonstrations before us. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Mrs. Carrier up here to the podium to go ahead and recognize the next showcase.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day to our board president and to Dr. Hannah Hosa. It gives me great privilege to stand before you tonight and announce our winners. I do want to say that I've been in the district for eight years and this program has grown tremendously. So it was very exciting to see all the way from elementary to high school students participate. So our pre-K, yes, pre-K. So first, I would like to call up our pre-K individual category. And that is first place McNabb, Ms. Anna Lucia. She did a bilingual presentation, a written paper, and a cooking demonstration. Our second place winner in the pre-K two individual category from McNabb Elementary as well was Anna Marie Busta. And third, and third place Ike and Row Elementary Carmen Alexander with a slideshow presentation over the impact of the historical black colleges and universities. Our pre-K two group first place was Major Elementary. Pre-K Black History Month project video, I Have a Dream. Sonya Joseph, Kyle Burks, Kinsley Coleman, J.C. On Bates, Riley Canar, and Riley Taylor. And if you haven't gotten an opportunity to see their video, please go to the website and watch it. They did a great job. Our second place is Lewis Elementary Brown Skin Girl Inspired by Beyonce Presentation. Is Lewis Elementary with us tonight? But those students are Trinity Dixon, Ava Cuevas, Asia Love Lady, Carter Tyler, Nina Young, and Isabel Matamoros. Our third place winners were from Anderson Elementary Ruby Bridges Drawing. We had Paisley Cooper, sorry, Audrey Prisco, and then Casey Moran. And I apologize if I missed your names. If we can give them a round of applause, even though they're not with us tonight. So third through fifth grade individual first place, Link Elementary, we have Ms. Camila Coto. Second place from Ike and Row Elementary, we had Jasmine Rodriguez. And then our third place winner from the School of International Studies at BAML is Zanaya McDonald. So grades three through five for the group first place, Major Elementary. We had Jillian Jones, Jayden Jones. We had Jillian Jones, Jayden Jones for Misty Copeland, and Dr. Azee Glass Presentation. Second place was Clark Elementary, Kalaya Dren, uh, Caleb Pinkin, and Juanita Lett. Third place from Booker Elementary, Naya Lawrence, and Oscar Sela Garmes, Gomez, excuse me. Are they with us tonight? If not, can we please go ahead and acknowledge them as well? Moving on to middle school, sixth through eighth place, or sixth through eighth place, sorry. Sixth through eighth grade. I do apologize for that. Um, first place is Spring Leadership Academy. We have Stephen Quentinella, unnamed lady art. Third place from S I S B was Anaya Barrett for Wema Rudolph. Sixth through eighth grade group, first place from Clotton Middle School, um, Alma Kumba, Jessica Lloyd, Isaiah Salinas. Second place from Bailey Middle School was Alexander, uh, Lewis, Joseph Reed, and William Reyes Canales for trap music and its influence on black history music video presentation. That was Josh's presentation, right? The trap music? No, okay. Just wanted to make sure I had it right. So moving on to our high school, first place individual from Winchee High School was Nakia Awai. And then first place group from Decane High School. We have Xavier Phillips, Anthony Russell, uh, Chelsea Usine, Talia Jarvis, Isabella Ricon, America La Mer, Lizette Pandilla, Natalie Santos, Alethia Masai, Amber De Long, Joyce Lynn Lopez, Jimmy Zavalt, Monica Guendo, and Paola Perez and Christian. Thank you. Come inside the horseshoe. Thank you. And then our second place from Spring Early College Multifaceted Slideshow Presentation, uh, Black History and How It Has Affected You was, uh, Jana Mills and Samantha Huff. And then, third place group, Westville High School Black History Presentation. I do not want to mess up this name, but Ms. Murphy or Mr. Murphy and Neveah Craft. So I present to you our winners, uh, first and second place for individual and group, starting with pre-K all the way to high school.
Thank you, Vice President Trustee Adams. Are there any parents here that, can you please stand to be recognized as we celebrate your amazing students tonight? And our principals from these campuses, if you can, can you please stand? Thank you. Appreciate you. I know it's been a long day for you guys. We're going to get a photo after we finish making our congratulatory remarks.
Everyone look up here.
Right here, guys. Right here. Nice smiles, everybody. Right here, right here, right here. Alright, one more. Here we go. I think I was four more. Hang on, guys. I got you. Step up there and get a center. Oh, I'm sorry.
I also want to recognize our teachers that work with these kids.
You guys, I see Williams back there. Oh, next one's up.
Wait till it settles down a little.
We gotta keep going to save them for their next award. Keep the volume down.
Thank you, Board President, uh, Dr. Hinojosa, members of the board. So, um, for this next, uh, presentation, I'd like to ask the following people to please join me at the podium. Um, Eduardo Campo, Winchee High School Principal, Dr. Alfred James, Spring ISD Police Sergeant Andre Jones, and Officer Valerie Willey. Alright, so since September 2000, the board has recognized district staff members and other members of the Spring ISD community with the A B C D Award, Above and Beyond the Call of Duty. Tonight, the district would like to recognize Eduardo Campo, a Carl Winchee Senior High School Law Enforcement Pathway student for his bravery and quick thinking shown during an event on campus in December. During an afternoon lunch transition, Ocampo saw a disruption in the main hall at Winchee and took action, utilizing his CTE pathway training to support a Winchee faculty member in de-escalating an altercation between two other students and remaining there until a administrator had arrived on the scene. He assisted the teacher without hesitation or concern for himself and through his actions provided a positive example of quick, efficient de-escalation while remaining cool under pressure. Ocampo was identified for recognition by the Spring ISD Police Department. By offering his support, Ocampo helped resolve the conflict and keep his campus a safe place for teaching and learning. In addition, uh, Sergeant Andre Jones has a few words and a special presentation.
Good evening. The mission of Spring ISD Police Department is to safeguard our facility, our staff and students to ensure that they have a safe learning facility to fulfill their goals and dreams. Eduardo, on campus, you exemplify a four-corner virtues that we identified. Fortitude, prudence, temperance, and justice. By having that temperance, you was able to be able to not let the surrounding area influence your thinking. You was able to have justice and judge equally. You began to have inner strength, which is fortitude, and was able to judge wisely. One of the one things that Officer Williams stated was that one thing that you wanted to do was make sure that you protected your teacher at all times. That's to show the love and collaboration that Dr. James has on his campus and that Officer Williams has provided over ten years in Spring ISD, which our board members and our superintendent exemplifies. By you doing that, you show great courage and we truly appreciate you for that. Um, Spring ISD would like to present you with a presentation of, of a token of our sincerity, a challenge coin. This shows our partnership between us, the police department, you, the community. This is what every person in Spring ISD should be doing, making sure our schools are safe. And as admin does it, police do, you do too as a student, which shows that, that Spring is still the number one district and striving to protect our students. At this time, I would like to present you with this challenge coin and remind you that the Bible says, "Bless us all the peacemakers, for they shall inherit the earth." And that's exactly what you have did, is become a peacemaker and make sure your students are safe, that they not harm each other or the teachers. So we are grateful for you and that the world has many goals for you. If you ever choose to continue the path of law enforcement and you want to be an officer and come back to Spring and work, this is your home. Welcome back home always. Thanks for that.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we would also like to present you with this plaque and recognition of going above and beyond. We are really proud of you. You know, it's still so powerful. You see something, say something, you said something and you did something. And we are grateful for that and we are excited and looking forward to see where your journey takes you. Congratulations, high school. I'd like to recognize what you said you were.
That's good work. Just wanted to congratulate them again. We, we talked about our, our vision at Winchee, um, as for our students being socially responsible, um, and globally ready. And so you definitely exemplified that. I know you're going to Marines when you graduate. So, uh, congratulations in advance for your service. Thank you for everything you've done for us. And just want to publicly acknowledge your accomplishment. And also want to thank, uh, Lakeithia Collins. She's watching online. Cause she was a teacher that also intervened. And being that threshold, we talked about our springway systems and routines that really assisted with de-escalating that. So thank you. Um, just, I appreciate the board for recognizing this.
Are, are your parents still recognized? Alright, well, you've had your screen, ma'am.
Alright, so good evening, President Durant, members of the board, our community, um, that's here, our leadership team. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Holy Comforter Episcopal Church, which is under the spiritual leadership of Reverend John Sword. Holy Comforter has served on the Spring ISD Ministerial Alliance for many years and continues to support our district as a key member of the ministerial alliance, mentoring, tutoring, or tutoring our students, providing school supplies and other resources, financial, academic, and emotional, to help our students on their path to success. Today, we would like to especially recognize two members of this congregation who have gone above and beyond in their partnership with our district. Reverend Bob Lowry, you'll stand and come right here, Deacon Lowry. Currently serves as a deacon at Holy Comforter. Ordained as a deacon in 2012, we affectionately call him Deacon Bob. Under his leadership, Holy Comforter has extended worship services into six local nursing homes. He also hosts a support group for the unemployed and spearheads Tackle Life Ministries, a nonprofit group dedicated to supporting spring families. He makes sure to dedicate time weekly to tutor students at Spring High School, where he helps them with their reading skills. Whenever Spring ISD comes calling for support, he and the church are the first to deliver and we appreciate all they have done to support our school district. Deacon Bob is joined in spirit of service to others by his high school sweetheart and wife, Louise. She is also an active member of the church and has served as a mentor through the Vine Mentoring Program. Another notable and hardworking member of Holy Comforter Episcopal Church is Ms. Linda Astala. She currently serves as the coordinator of school partnership ministries for the church. She is most known in the district for starting the organization called Kids Hope in 2013. This is when Holy Comforter began its mentoring partnership with Sawyers Elementary over 25 years ago. Um, I'm sorry, with Sawyers Elementary where 25 members of the Holy Comforter, um, church served as mentors on a weekly basis. Mentors included, uh, retired principals, former teachers, and others from various churches that were willing to make connections with our students. Mrs. Astala continues to serve as a very dedicated mentor through the Vine Mentoring Program, working in particular, with particular students at both Heritage and previously at Sawyers Elementary Schools. She also led and the support efforts to adopting Sawyers Elementary, providing a meal to
our students, our faculty and staff, and thank you so much for your commitment, because you have a lot of organizations that say, but they don't do, and we appreciate you doing all that you do to support spring and Pennsyl School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could come this way, some people that want to say hello.
I'd like to thank the board and to recognize all the hard work you've done, and we're excited for you, and we just promise to keep supporting you in the way we have in the past, because we want you to keep getting better, for God's sakes. We see that. Thank you.
You said it. I also want to add and thank trustee Kelly P. Hodges and Trinita Carroll, who are part of our Community Engagement Committee. out at Decane High School, the floral design pathway that have created these Valentine beautiful This is our inaugural, our first recognition. bouquet of roses. Each month through that committee and partnership with Ms. And this is all of our students out at Decane High School. Carroll's department face, we'll be recognizing our community partners. So big round of applause and just to celebrate you. And so congratulations at being the first. And then, of course, you have the bag with your published authors, our two students, our young lady from Wenchey High School, Senior High School, and the young man from Spring High School. So hope you enjoy those books, as well as this beautiful design from our CTE program at Decane High School. Thank you, Dr. Hinoosa. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Is everybody good? And then we'll get started. We're now going to reconvene. For our next item, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our scouts from Troop 355. Thank you for being here. All right. This is an item that allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on the agenda before those items are considered by the board. So Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up for agenda participation?
Yes, Madam President. Yolanda Merritt has signed up to speak on item 10.1. That is the 2022 Teacher Effectiveness, Retention, and Recruitment Incentive Update. And as I invite Ms. Merritt to the podium, I do have a brief paragraph to read. So the board invites interested citizens to address the board regarding any item on tonight's agenda that they desire, other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any board member, staff member, citizen, or student of the district. The board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the board infringes on the guidelines, as stated previously, or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, you will have three minutes to present. Mr. Schiffer will keep time, which will be displayed on the monitors. The board will not debate nor respond to any question during agenda participation. The board will seriously consider your input when addressing the items on tonight's agenda. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal utterance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district, and we will hear you now.
First, I would like to present the board with our mercy chocolates. I learned today that mercy with two i's means thank you very much. Greetings and mercy to Superintendent Hinoosa, President Durant, and Board of Trustees and the Cabinet. I'm here to reflect on the 2022 Teacher Effectiveness, Retention, Incentive Update. By approving this resolution, you are renewing hope within our teaching community. You are renewing hope that our hard work and long hours preparing our students for the STAR test was not done in vain. You are renewing hope in teachers that go in early, stay late, and work weekends and don't complain. You are renewing hope in teachers who have perfect attendance, year after year, despite the pandemic. You are renewing hope in teachers that we are valued by doing the work that others say bless you while shaking their head no, when you tell them you are a special education teacher. You are renewing hope in the vision that retaining highly qualified teachers is a priority. You are renewing hope that we are collaboratively working to continue to being a district of choice. You are renewing hope not by not just listening, but hearing us. On behalf of Spring AFT, we strongly, undeniably, unequivocally support the Board of Trustees passing the proposed resolution for 2022 Teacher Effectiveness, Retention, Incentive Update. And again, mercy with two i's. Thank you. Thank you.
We have no other presenters signed up for tonight.
Right. It was our pleasure. Our next item is public participation, this portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed up this evening, Mr. Binkley, for public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation, Dr. Matthew Parasaw.
Thank you, President Durant, and good evening, members of the board, Dr. Hinoosa and the senior leadership team. My first item is the 2022 Texas Academic Performance Report. We presented this at the Thursday, February the 9th meeting. During that time, we provided an update on the educational performance as outlined by that taper report. Under Texas Education Code, we are required to have a public hearing, which is scheduled for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Parasaw. So can you continue with your next item?
And Dr. Parasaw, you know, for the record, no one has registered to speak on the public hearing item tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Binkley. We have no one that has registered to speak on public participation.
Thank you, President Durant. My next item is, I'm speaking for Dr. Hill, who is out today. And as in our last meeting, Dr. Christian Nguyen, the Executive Director of Performance Management, came and provided a resolution to the board with an update for the 2022 Teacher Effectiveness and Retention Recruitment Incentive. And we asked the board to approve that incentive, which would provide additional payments of up to $238,500 to 54 teachers in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Parasaw. So I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022 Teacher Effectiveness and Retention Recruitment Incentive Update as presented by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022 Teacher Effectiveness and Retention Recruitment Incentive Update as presented by the administration.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee McDaniel's and trustee Adams. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. I love it. Thank you.
And the same to you.
And to all of our teachers. We are grateful for what they do every day, and we honored to have an opportunity to express that gratitude in a monetary way. For our next item, I'd like to again recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lapita Hinoosa.
Thank you, President Durant and members of the board, senior leadership. We are now on page 31. And I am representing our internal auditor that is at a conference, but on page 31, we are, we have, I am presenting the revised internal audit plan for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. And this revised plan will allow our internal auditor to complete all audits as previously discussed.
Okay, we talked about this on Thursday at our work session. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the revised internal audit plan for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 as presented by the administration.
Have a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve the revised internal audit plan for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 as presented by administration. Is there any discussion?
I did want to very briefly talk about the adjustment that the auditor is making to the plan. And I want to be sure I understand, there is an addition to the edge of the plan, it looks like, position control.
Yes, the position control, yes. That's what we're adding into the plan. And so a little bit about the process, you know, we start off with a survey from administration, all of our directors from each department and from the board, to identify areas that they feel need to be audited, or that they would like for the auditor to come in and lend some insight. And then she prepares a calendar for us based on that, and we approved that calendar. We have now asked that she do a position control audit and add that to the agenda. It came as a request from the Audit Committee, and the board gave consensus to move forward with this vote this evening on Thursday. We know we are going to soon approach that fall and when we lose that ESRA funds, and we want to just start to take a look at our positions and have her do an in-depth study of where we are. Would you like to add anything to that, Dr. Hinoosa? Am I missing anything?
So I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Hinoosa, for your support for this and for your cooperation with the auditor and making sure that is the, basically, the internal eyes of the board that she has cooperated with and provided everything she needs. Wanted to thank you for that.
Are there any other questions for discussion? Following the break that's coming up, what break are we having? Spring break. Following our spring breaks, you will start the audit with the departments and leadership for next year's. All right, not hearing any further discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item will be an update from our audit committees. And first up is the Audit Committee, and I'll let trustee Newhouse.
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit Committee has reviewed and the auditor has conducted a few audits that I would like to share with the board. I know you should have received a report from Mrs. Rios, but to just confirm it and make sure you understand what has taken place and if you have any questions for her. But the first one I would like to share is the Audit Committee reviewed the Procurement Department. The review of the Procurement Department, they were concerned about the P cards that the Procurement Department manages for the 2022 to 2033 school year. So the audit review by Mrs. Rios and Mr. Davis, they looked at the books and things that are happening at the Procurement Department. And from their conclusion, based on the reviews, the interviews, and relevant staff, and evaluation of the department, of the department and board policies and procedures, they concluded that the procurement cards reviews complied with the board policies and finance guidelines. So no exceptions were noted for all the procurement cards, since these cards were minimal distribution. And when I say minimum, I'm speaking of only 11 active P cards are given out within Spring ISD. Only selected departments or users have been authorized to use the procurement cards to maintain security and control of this. As a result, the internal department would like to recognize the provisional, they would like to recognize and acknowledge the Performing and Visual Arts Department, the Procurement Department, Child Nutrition, the Superintendent, Transportation, and Financial Services for their assistance and excellent cooperation during this internal audit. As it was done, there were no, no concerns of fraud or abuse or inappropriate use of the procurement cards. So thank you to those departments and to our internal auditor.
Thank you, trustee.
She also did two others. One was an activity fund done at Highland, I'm sorry, Harland Elementary School. And at this location-
All right. Not hearing any further discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item will be an update from our Audit Committees. And first up is the Audit Committee, and I'll let trustee Newhouse.
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit Committee has reviewed and the auditor has conducted a few audits that I would like to share with the Board. I know you should have received a report from Mrs. Rios, but to just confirm it and make sure you understand what has taken place and if you have any questions for her. But the first one I would like to share is the Audit Committee reviewed the Procurement Department. The computer, the review of the Procurement Department, they were concerned about the P cards that the Procurement Department manages for the 2022 to 2033 school year. So the audit, audit review by Mrs. Rios and Mr. Davis, they look at the books and things that are happening at the Procurement Department. And from their conclusion, based on the reviews, the interviews and relevant staff and evaluation of the department, of the department and Board policies and procedures, they concluded that the procurement cards reviews complied with the Board policies and finance guidelines. So no exceptions were noted for all the procurement cards since these cards were minimal distribution. And when I say minimum, I'm speaking of only 11 active P cards are given out within Spring ISD. Only selected departments or users have been authorized to use the procurement cards to maintain security and control of this. As a result, the Internal Department would like to recognize the provisional, they would like to recognize and acknowledge the Performing and Visual Arts Department, the Procurement Department, Child Nutrition, the Superintendent, Transportation, and Financial Services for their assistance and excellent cooperation during this internal audit. As it was done, there were no, no concerns of fraud or abuse or inappropriate use of the procurement cards. So thank you to those departments and to our internal auditor.
Thank you, trustee Newhouse.
She also did two others. One was an activity fund done at Highland, I'm sorry, Hoyleen Elementary School. And at this location, she reviewed the activity funds, deposits and receipts. She reviewed fundraising that was done at this particular school. And we are happy to report that the fundraising and funds that were done, the checks that she manually checks, and distributions that are done and transfers were all in compliance. So there were no, no records of inappropriate use at Hoyleen. And she likes to state that they have an excellent and strong bookkeeping procedure of their activity funds. So hats off to Hoyleen. She also reviewed Ponderosa Elementary. And at Ponderosa, she reviewed activity funds, deposits and receipts, fundraising activities. And at Ponderosa, I'm happy to report they have an excellent and strong bookkeeping department that is reviewed by their area superintendent, and all of it was in compliance. So hats off to Ponderosa Elementary. So as we get these reports from our internal auditor that is checking the various schools and departments, the Audit Committee will share these with you. And if you have any concerns with what is happening, please share it with the Audit Committee. But hats off to these departments at this time.
Thank you, trustee Newhouse. Next, we have our Board Governance Committee that's chaired by Dr. Deborah Jensen.
Madam President, we had an exciting time in Washington, DC, meeting with a legislative director for Representative Crenshaw. And as trustee Adams already described, we had, I think, a very good beginning to starting a conversation and trying to find common ground where we can get the federal government support for especially our special ed programs. We are looking forward to a day in Austin meeting our state legislators. And we will continue opening up more relationships, hopefully. In other news, when we first chose our first priorities that we were going to do for our advocacy, I mentioned that things get fluid and bills get introduced and that sort of thing. And we are in that exciting time right now. Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick has come out with a series of bills. And by the titles, we're not sure always what is involved in the bills, but we'll be looking at those. And everybody seems to be very interested in teacher retention and recruitment, so that's a plus. We're going to be probably really looking closely at how public schools are funded and our revenue sources. We are being faced with, I guess, strong support in the legislature for upping the Homestead exemption to $70,000. But as I understand it, that is not going to drastically hurt our tax base because our property values have been going up. It's interesting to me that one of his bills that he's put in is to increase teachers' rights. And then another bill is to increase parental rights. I think everybody's mentioned here, except for students, I don't know. We'll just have to look at this. It's an ongoing process here. Also, we have a Public Education Committee now, and we're very pleased that in the House, that Brad Buckley is the chairman of that committee. And his wife is an assistant superintendent, by the way. And so he's a man who probably knows about schools, the school system. So we're looking forward to taking our advocacy to the Texas Legislature and to Congress in Washington, DC. I am done. Anybody else on the Governance Committee want to add anything?
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Next, we have our Equity Committee, and that is led by trustee Winford Adams.
Thank you, Madam President. I was, Debbie just talked about the work we're doing in governance and asked if, I do want to add that the other, I think, critical member to the House Public Education Committee is Representative Charles Cunningham, who was formerly a trustee over in Umbel ISD, a really good person to have on that committee in support of public education. So we actually did not meet for our last Equity Committee because we were at building bridges with the Board, which I think was a really good use of time, as you discussed. We did do, so there are some opportunities looming for us. While we were in DC, we attended professional development by Dr. Marguerite Rosa at the Georgetown Edonomics Lab. And they are offering education finance training to trustees here local. So I and trustee McDaniel will be participating in that training, which is all about figuring out how to utilize finance and budget, especially in the face of the looming ESER cliff that's coming, how to best use those dollars and how to most equitably use those dollars. I was able to get a couple of extra scholarships because this training is being offered free of charge. There were a limited number of scholarships. And so I got my other Equity Committee member, managed to get her an invite as well. So we will be bringing that back. And I do want to apologize. I have recently become aware that I haven't really been bringing all of the resources that the Equity Committee produces to the entire body. So that's an oversight on my part. There's been a lot of work done and a lot of work produced by Ms. Westbrook and Dr. Hill that the full body needs to see. And so I'm in a process of going through my emails and pulling through my files to make sure that when we, actually, over the next week or so, you should start seeing some of those resources hit your mailbox.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Our next committee is led by trustee Kelly P. Hodges, and that is our Community Engagement Committee.
Good evening again. I just wanted to again thank everyone who participated in our table talks. And we're excited. Our second table talk will be this weekend on Saturday. And I encourage our community members to sign up and participate in that. We're excited to get your feedback. And do know that we're compiling all of the information. And we, you know, will present that once we complete the table talks. But again, we want to thank you all for your participation. I also want to thank Ms. Trinida Carroll and her department for always being able to assist and willing to assist and to go above and beyond in helping us reach the community and identifying, helping us to identify issues and/or concerns that some of the community members may have because they do really have their ear to the street in that department. So we, I really appreciate it. And thank you so much for lending your time and talents to help us with this committee. And it's only going to help us be stronger and do better work for Spring ISD. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to again thank my colleagues and those that are chairing those committees for all the fine work that we're doing. We're out here working and making sure that we fulfill our commitment to our constituents who have elected us to do so. So our next item is our Consent Agenda. And so now I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt any other items on tonight's Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Correa and seconded by trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, then let's call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.0821. No voting will take place in the closed session. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussion in that closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes an open session. And the time is now 8:55 PM. Now reconvene. Good evening. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 10:48 PM. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee McDaniel that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We adjourn tonight's meeting at 10:49 PM.